This Wednesday, August 19th, 2020, at roughly 6:00 PM, 6:00 something. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, we'll give this our best shot here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I think we did pretty good. Does some lucky soul there have the mission statement in front of them? You'd think I'd remember, you know, it's only been six years now.
I do have it, Andy.
Okay, you're hired.
Okay. The mission of the Central Curry School District Number One in partnership with families and community is to ensure each and every student is prepared to succeed and contribute in a global society by engaging in a challenging personalized program of educational excellence.
Excellent, thank you. All right, agenda item number two, interviews and appointment of a new board member. Tim and I have been having some discussions along with Scott and I, and I think tonight we're going to, basically what I don't want to do, we've got five people to interview, and I don't want it to be turned into a rush, let's hurry up and get through this type of situation. So I basically, I want to engage the board in how best to proceed with potentially maybe sneaking in a special meeting sometime between now and the September meeting, or just doing it at the September meeting. So I, yeah, anybody have thoughts or comments on that, I'm open.
You're thinking of doing interviews today and then having a special meeting, is that what you're talking about?
No, I was thinking of doing the interviews at the special meeting rather than trying to mix it in with, or at the set, just putting it off to the September meeting for the sake of trying to get through our business here tonight without rushing through it. What were you gonna say, Tim?
Sorry, I'm getting Mr. Denning in. I did want to update the board that since our last conversation, we've had three of the five candidates withdraw their applications, and for very, very good reasons. But, so our current candidates are Jeremy Dumeire and Jeremy Skinner.
Okay, well, that simplifies it.
With that change of events, Andy, would you like just to get to do that tonight?
Yeah, I say we forge ahead if we're only doing two people. If everybody got the, you know, Kaylee responded with the list of questions, and then I think Scott added one that he wanted to add into the mix, all of which I'm perfectly fine with. I just need to find them.
So I guess we're lucky in the sense that both, I had informed both of the candidates that we would be moving it to September, but thankfully they're both here, and that's okay. I think if they're prepared to move forward, we certainly can do that.
Yeah, it's up to the group here. I really don't, I, yeah, I mean, if we've necked down from five to two, then that kind of eliminates my issue, but if anybody has any thoughts on it, I have no preference here now at this point.
Well, I guess by, just to share, I know I'd sent out a draft of, you know, eight to 10 questions, and there, as you said, Scott and Kaylee gave some specifics to add to that. So I'm not sure if you want to just quickly narrow those down to less questions. It wasn't intent for you to go through all of those, but select from, and so I'll turn that back over to you for next steps.
Okay.
My opinion is that we should move forward as long as both the candidates are on board with that.
Do we, I'm trying, I must have deleted the email that had the list of questions in it. Let me see if I can find it, unless somebody else has it close by there. I'm looking here.
Andy, I'll resend it to you.
Okay.
Take me a moment.
I just sent it, Andy.
Okay. Got it.
I think with four board members, we just each ask one question that we like the most?
I like that.
I mean, there's only, we can each just ask the same question, pick a question you like the best, and make that your question?
Just for the, so the public knows, the board has all received the applications and statements from the candidates, and so maybe as a matter of introduction, both candidates could summarize that, and then you could ask your questions.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Andy, I'm still trying to find my questions, I think I have it here, but I'm still trying to find it.
Okay, well, I can, I can read too, or, if you don't end up finding it.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
What email do you have, Elba Nancy?
I'm just looking, I'm not sure which one I'm supposed to choose on here, because I kept them all on my phone, so I'm speeding through it to see which one that Tim had the questions.
Maybe Scott could email that to you real quick as well.
Can you send that to my, do you have my other email, my home email?
I might have it here.
Is it NJS?
Yes.
I'm sending it right now, okay?
Got it, thanks a lot.
Okay, yeah, so we've got the four questions there, which I'm perfectly fine with, Scott.
Okay.
What's that, Nancy?
I received the email, thank you.
Okay, okay, so we've got those four, and then, and then Scott had one more he wanted to add to the mix, I believe, that's not on there, Scott?
Correct, yeah. Well, yeah, it's all my thread that I sent to Tim.
Oh, okay.
I'll just make that my question. Are we each gonna pick a question?
Yeah, that's fine. So I'll take one, I guess. Make it easy.
Looks like we're both, we have both Jeremy candidates.
Yes, we do. All right, I think we're mostly organized here. Let, we'll start with Jeremy Dumeire. Are you, are you on, Jeremy?
Good afternoon, I am on.
Okay, thank you for participating tonight. You want to give a brief introduction?
Well, for those that I've not met, again, my name is Jeremy Dumeire, I am the Curry County Emergency Manager. Lived here in Gold Beach now since 2013. I have three of my kids in the Gold Beach School District, or will be in the Gold Beach School District, we resume, and two more that will be up and coming. I applied for this position, I think, with the current state that we're in with COVID-19, that I can offer some good perspective from the emergency management side of things, and that is why I applied.
All right, thank you very much. Jeremy Skinner, are you on?
I'm on.
Would you like to give a brief introduction?
Sure.
You don't really need one.
Jeremy Skinner, I'm the Library Director for Curry Public Library. I've lived in Gold Beach since 2013. Prior to that, I grew up here, I was born here and went to school here, and then lived in Portland for about 20 years, and then came back. So that, that's the gist of it. I have been, since I've been here since 2013, spent quite a bit of time working in various capacities on collaborative projects with the school, and I suppose my, my real, long-term in it for the long haul project has been trying to work to help in whatever way I can to improve technology infrastructure within the district. So that's been kind of an important project for me, and so I've been on the Tech Committee for the district as a community representative for quite a while, so.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, I'll just lead off with question one here, and I'll just, we'll just kind of alternate back and forth. So question one from the board is what motivates you to want to become a board member, and that, you touched on it a little bit, so we'll start with Jeremy Dumeire. If there's more you want to add to that one, the floor is yours.
I appreciate it, yeah, I think I did touch on that in very broad stroke. Again, I've got a total of five children, three which will be in the, in the school district this year, and two more on the way. I've been the Emergency Manager now for three years. I've had the opportunity to kind of play with disaster, as it were, and COVID-19 being the marathon of disasters. So that's really what started the motivation to want to apply. That, and talking with Luke Martinez, who's actually one of my employees here in the county with his job as a quad safety officer, I got some pretty good perspective of what he undertook as part of the board, and that also fueled my interest.
Okay, thank you. Jeremy Skinner, is there anything you wanted to add to your opening statement in regards to question one?
Probably two things. One, I, I have been on a number of different boards, and I also work, you know, we follow a lot of very similar rules as a special district library, so, so when I saw the opening, I was interested in it partly because I know how long it takes people to get acclimated and to understand how to, how to function on a public board, and because I know how critical this time is right now, as Jeremy Dumeire mentioned, COVID-19, I felt like this would be a good time for me to be able to step in, and hopefully, obviously, there's a lot of stuff I would need to learn about being a school board member, but I think that just in terms of procedural stuff, I would have a pretty good understanding there. And then I guess the second thing would be that, why am I interested? Because I care a whole lot about the success of the school district. The school district is incredibly important to the community, and it's been a very important part of my life, so.
All right, thank you, Jeremy. Kaylee, you want to take question two?
Sure. Question two from the board is what attributes are essential for successful school board members? We'll go back to Jeremy Dumeire.
Thank you. Any successful board member has to be open-minded and willing to be pragmatic with the, the issues that they're facing. I'm fortunate to have been part of many different boards. Of course, I do participate in the Board of Commissioners meetings quite regularly. I do chair the Curry Amateur Radio Emergency Services Board, and I've been a part of others throughout my past. You have to be open-minded, you have to be pragmatic, you have to be willing to set aside your own opinion and consider all the options out there. That's really the key to being a successful board member.
Thank you. Jeremy Skinner?
Yeah, I, that's, that's a really good, good thought. I guess I would add to that, that I think the attention to detail in reading and processing information, at least in the context of the school board, is extremely important. I have attended some of the school board meetings, but not all the time, partly because it's almost too much information as a member of the public to try to process and keep up with. So I guess I think that probably one of the most important things, if I was on the board, would be dedicating time to really process the information and understand it and be able to, as a board member, provide the, help that, use that information to inform decision-making.
All right, thank you, Jeremy. Nancy, you want to take number three?
Sure. Do you have sufficient time and energy to devote to this position? And then we'll go to Jeremy Dumeire.
In terms of energy, this, this position I'm in has definitely tested how much energy it takes to be involved. I do have the ability to be engaged, of course, and, you know, I can devote quite a bit of time to the things that I'm focused on. As far as being able to be part of the board, yes, I have the ability to, to set aside those times, to be able to focus on the issues I need to read over, consider. For instance, the packet that was mailed out on Friday, I've been able to read through the entirety of that packet and digest at least my basic knowledge of what it, what it is that would be discussing today, so yes.
Thank you. Jeremy Skinner?
Yes, that, that's, that's a question that I've thought about a lot. I've thought about it on and off prior to, over the last few years, actually, in various capacities, because I, as I said in my introduction, I think that the success of the school is extremely important to me, and there have been moments on and off where I've really felt like I would like to try to do everything I could to help, and maybe being on the school board would be important. And so there have definitely been moments where I have decided that I really would not have the time to do it at this point in time. I'm kind of in a window, in a place where I do feel like I have time to do it, which is why I went ahead and put the application in. So I'm not really sure what kind of time commitment above and beyond the monthly meetings is, is happening right now with COVID-19 for you guys, but, but I would certainly prioritize it above pretty much everything except for my, my daily work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy, but both Jeremys. Scott, I'm gonna leave you with the last one, and then your added question, you can have them both.
All right. So Jeremy Dumeire, what is your vision for education in the community?
That's a good question. You know, I hadn't put too much thought into that, that question, I didn't think about that coming up, I'll be honest, but I've been fortunate to have been able to attend some pretty unique schools and to get some different perspectives on schooling. Graduated from Powers High School, the class of 2000, with a class size of 16 walking down the aisle. But I also attended Myrtle Point High School, I also attended Elementary in Vancouver, Washington. So I've gotten to see quite a bit of difference in how schools are run, just from a child's perspective. So how, my vision for the Gold Beach School District, in this time, it's of course a challenge with COVID, but as long as we are getting the best possible education to the kids, that's really all it comes down to, is just getting the education we can to them, providing the opportunities to be not just, you know, in the books, but also the hands-on opportunities that we can provide once we get past COVID-19. We have some great programs here in Gold Beach, you know, with, with what Carly's done, with the ASCEND program, there's a lot of good opportunities, so it just comes down to providing the best possible opportunities for the, for the kids here.
Thank you, Jeremy. And Jeremy Skinner, what is your vision for the education in this community?
To have as many resources as possible, to, to provide options for children and families to make sure that, because not every child has the same educational needs, I don't think, and I think that's what makes it really, really difficult with the resources that the school district has at their disposal. So I guess my vision would be probably an extension of what I do in my regular job, which is to try to figure out ways to make education a larger system than just the school district itself. I, whether that's library summer programs, after-school programs, community-based education of some kind, more collaboration with the school board, more creative partnerships with the SD, I just think that doing everything possible to pull together different resources that may not be straight out of the school's budget, and trying to make sure that those are all integrated and communicating with one another and functional, I guess, would be my vision, and with the ultimate goal of providing options and a more rounded opportunities for children.
Excellent, thank you, Jeremy. And the final question kind of ties in to a little bit along that same line for both of you there, so start with Jeremy Dumeire first. It's just looking, I know that both of you guys are involved in community programs, you being the Emergency Coordinator, and Jeremy Skinner being the librarian there. I guess my question revolves around what, if any, involvement have you had with volunteer work with the school to date, in the sense of participating in different community boards that we've had so far, advisory committees, or just any involvement that you would have had within the school district to date? Mr. Dumeire?
In terms of involvement with the school directly, I can't say that I have to date. I have been a Little League coach, I've taught in the rookies system, I know that that's not directly tied to the schools, but I have been involved in that. I did coach for a couple of years and enjoyed it, I absolutely loved that opportunity. I have given different presentations, not necessarily in Gold Beach, but at other schools and such for emergency management, and I've made that offer previously in Gold Beach to give presentations regarding emergency preparedness and such, but that would be the extent that I could answer.
Thank you. Jeremy Skinner?
The things that I've done have primarily been quite a while ago, I guess that would have been 2014, probably, I was involved with the district strategic planning committee, and then following that, became a part of the Technology Committee, which was, I think, started when Roy Durfee was superintendent, and continuing to, to do that, although I, it's interesting how that role has changed. It used to be that my role was trying to beg people to listen to things that they could do, and now it's listening to the things that they've done, and being generally pleased. And although it's not directly a school committee, I still continue to serve on the Gold Beach Youth Fund Board, and through that, that's a, that's a great joy for me, because I get to see a lot of positive stories about things that have been done within the district, things that we've helped fund, but, but also hearing from groups that have needs, but, but seeing what they're doing creatively to, to meet those needs. So those are kind of the, the main areas where, where I've had more of an active role with the district, had more of a passive role in terms of managing, well, not really managing the ASCEND program, but, but being the director of the library under which the ASCEND program
Thank you. Turn my time over to you, Mr. Wright.
Reserve the balance of your time, do you?
Something like that.
Okay, well, thank you, guys, for, for that. I, I mean, I think I, we have enough to move ahead here, unless anybody has anything that, further that they'd like to ask or add to the discussion?
I do not in regards to the interview.
Well, with, with that being said, I think I will make a motion to appoint Jeremy Skinner as the, to fill the recently vacated seat by Luke Martinez.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Andy, I'm starting to interrupt, but as a point of order, by public law, you have to have a roll call of all board members.
Yeah, I forgot.
And ask, ask them to vote for their candidate, and then, and then make the appropriate motion afterwards, if, in that sense.
Oh, oh, we have to do a?
We all have to vote for our candidate first.
Yes.
Oh, individually?
Yes.
Oh, okay, well, learn something every day. Okay, well, I guess I've made my, drawn my line in the sand, then. My, my selected candidate would be Jeremy Skinner, so I guess we'll move to Vice Chairman McNair.
It's me now.
Oh, sorry, Kaylee. Oh, that's right, that's right. It's a new year, if only, okay. I'm sorry, Vice Chairman Clarno, yes, you have the floor.
My vote is for Jeremy Skinner as well.
Okay. Mr. McNair?
I would also vote for Jeremy Skinner, and I just would like to mention, I think both candidates, I mean, I appreciate having multiple candidates to pick from, for one, and I both, I think they would both be a great fit. For me, it was just the, the extra standout part was, I know Mr. Skinner's been involved with those multiple committees, and, and has, has done some great things leading up to that, so I mean, it's a natural transition to the board side, so Mr. Skinner's my choice.
And Nancy?
My choice is for Jeremy Skinner also.
Okay, yeah, and I'd like to piggyback on that and just say, you know, we've had to do this, I don't know how many times since I've been on the board, but a couple, and it, it is, it is kind of a natural transition. I tend to gravitate toward people who've, you know, been on the Budget Committee, or the Tech Committee, or, you know, had a prior involvement in the district. So it, yeah, it, it makes it, makes it an easier decision that way, at least for me, so. Okay, what, what, now we're making a motion, Tim, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
But I will move, we appoint Jeremy Skinner to the vacant seat.
I second the motion.
All those in favor? All those in favor? Scott McNair.
Aye.
Kaylee Clarno.
Aye.
Nancy Sorensen.
Aye.
And Andy Wright is an aye as well. Okay. New new board member appointed, and then I we have to administer the oath of office, I believe. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, I believe Teresa has that ready. And we sent copies to all the candidates to have in the event of that selection. So in case Jeremy doesn't have that handy, Teresa can read slow to to do that.
I
Do you have your oath, Jeremy?
I think I do. Give me one second here.
Let me know when you're ready.
It was in a it was in the board packet, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, let me just get to it here.
I'd just like to say to Mr. Dumire too, thank you for throwing your hat in the ring. I appreciate your time today.
I certainly appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeremy. And and, you know, that we have openings on the budget committee. We have openings on pretty much every committee for for involvement. It's a it's a great place to start.
Almost there, guys, I think I'm actually, I'm not seen. Do you happen to know?
How about if I, I'm sorry, how about if I forward it to you? And in the meantime, Teresa can do the oath, and I'll forward you the the board packet.
I've got the board packet. I'm not sure what page the
It should be a separate document within that email.
Oh, okay. Is it under is it called Proposed Policies?
I don't remember it being in that email, Tim.
Yeah, it wasn't. It only went to the candidates.
Oh, okay, okay.
I've got Ready Schools Safe Learner Packet, Proposed Policies, and then I've got a board packet. I think
Well, I can read it slowly, and you can just repeat after me.
Or if if you want to email it to me, either way works. I'm just
Teresa, I think I think we can accomplish it your way.
Okay, okay, okay. So here we go. Are you ready?
Yes.
Okay, so I, Jeremy Skinner.
I, Jeremy Skinner.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the State of Oregon.
Constitution of the State of Oregon.
The laws. And the policies of
And the policies of
Central Curry School District Number One.
Central Curry School District Number One.
During my term.
During my term.
I will faithfully and impartially
I will faithfully and impartially
Discharge the responsibilities
Discharge the responsibilities.
Of the office.
Of the office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
There you go.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And then we'll need to connect for you to sign the oath sometime, Jeremy.
Okay. Is are you guys in the district office tomorrow?
Yeah, I'm there tomorrow, eight before.
I'll swing by probably late morning.
Okay, that's fine. Just knock on the door.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you guys' support with my application, and I'm looking forward to working with everybody.
Thank you for volunteering. And with that, we will forge ahead here with a with a full fully seated board. Number three, agenda changes. I have nothing.
No.
Okay, number four, approval of consent agenda. July fifteen meeting minutes and approval of hiring Mary. I'm gonna butcher it. Do you have a pronunciation on that, Tim?
Caravia.
Caravia, fifth grade teacher.
I would move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second it.
I'll second. All those in favor? Kaylee Clarno.
Aye.
Scott McNair.
Aye.
Nancy Sorensen.
Aye.
Can can Jeremy vote on this one since he wasn't?
Probably not from the from moving forward after this one.
Oh, yeah.
Stay on this one.
Yeah. Did I call Nancy?
Yes.
It's been a long day. Andy Wright is an aye. Consent agenda approved as presented. Number five, citizen input for non-agenda items. As of five forty-five, I don't believe we got any comment cards other than Mr. Clay, who will call on at the appropriate agenda item. Is that right, Tim?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. District reports. Is Crystal on tonight, Tim?
I actually excused her. She's been working with the that this was day one of the annual audit. And she's been working with the audit team. And so I just wanted to reaffirm that you all received her the financial reports last night. And I think probably the biggest takeaway from that is our was that our ending fund balance was a little higher than we expected. And I think that's probably a combination of some frugal end of the year, from March thirteen on, we really tried to watch our expenses. That was also in the time that we had been had received notification from the legislature and so on that about the potential impacts of what COVID would have on the economy. And so with that, we've we've really cut down a lot of our spending. And so with that, we have a little higher balance than we usually do. And then the second thing would be that just as a reminder, when you look at some of those sheets, the way our state funding arrives is that we get two installments in July and then one installment through April. And then in May, we get two installments again. So it's a bigger than, so if you're trying to calculate what our monthly amount is from O D E, this July was a double. I think other than that, it was a pretty standard report.
Okay, yeah, I reviewed all four packets and I everyone was I did notice the fund balance was was looking pretty healthy, but aside from that, there was really nothing else of of interest. So so, yeah, normal. If anybody has questions for Crystal, just shoot her an email. Six point two principal reports. Mr. Denning, are you on?
Tom, we're not hearing you. Tom, as you can see, is in transit from Banden, so he might be in and out. Maybe we can go to to Mr. Metzger. And then I'll pull up. Tom gave me a written report. I can pull up in the event that we lose him.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead and go.
Mr. Metzger, the floor is yours.
So I will, I'll try to keep things fairly short because we're a lot of this is still, you know, with the 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 challenges of the COVID nineteen shutdown, we've been looking at how to begin again. So a lot of this is still in formation and still being done. But looking ahead to registration, I looked at last year's August twenty nineteen for kind of what I talked about last year. Boy, howdy, is some of it different. So registration's all going to be done online. The district, their staff are currently working on preparations for online registration through Power School. We'll put information out about that in the next week or so. A freshman orientation, I'm putting together a digital freshman orientation. This will be a chance to very briefly meet with teachers. It'll all be done via Zoom. It'll be optional as well as what is called on the Internet AMA format, so Ask Me Anything, where they can get their questions about high school answered by the principal. It's a new world, and we're dealing with that fact because normally we'd invite all of the kids and the parents to the building. They'd sit in the library with me. They could meet the teachers, see their classrooms. It's not the way things are going to be done this year. Looking ahead to September fourteenth, distance learning through November second. We'll be reevaluating things based on metrics at that point. Distance learning will require face time, face-to-face time with teachers done digitally, and we'll have a shortened school day with appropriate modifications. Details on the schedule will be available to staff and families starting next week. Goal with that model is to then return to school either in a full return or a hybrid model. The other option for families is an online education. For those that feel unsafe in an eventual return to school, we're offering ingenuity. There will be online, this will be an online-only program through support man, though support for management. Excuse me, I'm having a hard time reading my own writing. Progressing through lessons, unlocking work, redos, getting help will generally be available primarily during school hours. We've asked those who choose this hybrid model, commit to it through at least the first nine weeks. They will not return to school in a hybrid model. A couple of project updates. So technology with new as new opportunities have become available recently. We've been able to purchase additional technology support. Gear Up allowed for the purchase of another card of Surface Pros for the high school. In addition, there's talk of another card through other community resources that would be probably shared between the two schools. Teachers have had laptops purchased for them by the district with current specifications instead of pieces from I think the oldest one I found at one point was two thousand seven. So that's that's a big change in quality of life for teachers. Teachers will be able to, instead of having to put in extra hours, the building, they get caught up on things. They can take their laptop with them and do work at home if they're more comfortable. Also, the laptops are all equipped with webcams and microphones, so they'll be able to more easily host online classes with those. Maintenance after prolonged pause due to COVID nineteen, so some of our contractors are starting to have availability in their schedules again. So current maintenance projects include a confirmed project repair and replace the metal shop, which will be done by reselect. We've taken that to three bids and we have selected them. As well as new flooring in the music room and a flooring project that was done in the back hallway. So those those have just, they're in various states of beginnings. So thing, even though kids aren't going to be coming back into the building right away, we're making sure the building can be right, looking better for them and that we're going to be prepared and cleaned and set up for whatever future protocols come our way. Athletics has been a big question in the community. What is athletics going to look like? Obviously, things are going to be a lot different this year. So what has happened, O S A voted to modify the sports schedule. So what's going to happen is during January and February, we'll have basketball. That'll be the first season of the year. March and then April, the early part of the spring is when you'll see fall sports, potentially volleyball, soccer, and cross country. And then May and June, spring sports will play, which is baseball, softball, track and field. In the meantime, we are looking at options to allow some sort of limited one thing that we've considered calling it as an athletic conditioning club. Really, it's just allowing a limited number of kids access to the fields, to things like that, focusing on maintaining physical health, social and emotional health and safety overall for not only our athletes but our students. And as odd as it sounds, to prioritize that when we're talking about having remote learning classes, one of the things that we're seeing is as our kids return to classes for practice, the look of honest relief on their faces is they just have something that feels a little bit normal. A couple of them that I've talked to, this was the first time that they've actually like left their house much. Especially our students who don't drive personally. They've found themselves sort of at the 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 mercy of their parents' schedules, and in many cases, that's left them in the house since March. Outside of where they can walk to and where they can easily get to on foot. So some of them were just happy to be back in some social setting in some semblance of normal. Yes, they have to be six feet apart. No, they can't touch each other. No, it's not the way they want to do it because they want to, you know, high five and hug every time something good happens. But just the the simple mental health effect for our young our young people as they return to their campus and engage with one another has been visible. So that's one of the things that we're going to continue to encourage and continue to try to provide for it within safety, the safety measures as they're laid out for us.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Metzger? Very good. Thank you, Josh. Oh, there I see Mr. Denning. We'll give it a whirl.
He's trying to connect.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, let me turn off the phone.
Albatting.
Sorry, it's taking a second. Okay, okay. You know, I always complain about Josh being long-winded, but Josh, right on time, man. I actually had to download the Zoom app on my wife's phone because my microphone wasn't working for some reason. So I'm, I don't know if you can tell where I'm at right now. We had a doctor's appointment in in Coos Bay, so we're on our way back. We pulled over at Banden. So I'm going to get my report going and then head home. I think you already talked a little bit about our new hire. Super tickled to death to even have three candidates at the end of the summer like this and three good candidates. And we hired Mary Caravia out of Portland, and she actually will be plugged into our, at this time, in our fifth grade slot. And she did her student teaching in fifth grade. So I think I think she's going to be very good. We've been really struggling the last few days to find her housing, but she just found something right by the park there. So we're very excited to have her on board, ready to start the school year. So with our mentoring program that we have, I don't hesitate at all anymore to hire good quality, brand-new teachers because we have such good support from Susan and Perry and Gretchen and Mary Lee too. So that's our new hire, which is that completes our hire. Sports, we I still haven't heard anything about junior high sports, but I'm assuming, and from what I'm hearing, nothing official yet, that we'll probably be on a similar schedule as the high school and wait till winter and January and February and see what we can squeeze in for our sports. It will be difficult with facilities, sharing facilities with the high schools, and also referees and buses too. So we'll have to figure, that'll be kind of a logistical problem, but hopefully we can work it out. Because if you guys remember when you were in junior high, junior high sports is is awesome, and along with our band program too. Don't want to get in trouble for music. Our yearbook arrived. So I will show you right there, the superheroes of Riley Creek, and they're available. We have some extras for twenty-five dollars, so contact the office or come by, knock on the door. But it's a pretty awesome yearbook. I'd like to thank Destiny Hendricks and Hope Taylor. They did the majority of it, working with Mrs. Nichols at the high school. And then I believe after COVID hit, Ryland Bales and Bryce Bales helped with a lot of the proofreading and getting it kind of ready to go to the the publishers. So thank you to the four, the five of them. And it's awesome to have, and someone's dumping out the garbage can behind me. Gear Up, we just hired Connie Keel for our new Gear Up coordinator, and we couldn't have made a better choice. She's has been working with the Gear Up program as a teacher and going to some of the trainings and camps with the kids. And I think it's going to be a really good last year for the the funded part of the grant. And I hopefully will be able to make it continue with with district funding however we can over the next few years because it's been an awesome program for our kids over the last, what, six years, Tim, I think? Yeah, so it's been great too. We still need a garden coordinator. I was out there the other day, and and we have a lot of master gardeners and volunteers that are keeping the garden going. But hopefully, if we get kids back in the building, we can get some in the garden area and kind of get that going again too. But we do need to hire a garden coordinator to take all these plays too. I know Trent and Clark have been working really hard at school, and it's kind of sad that we won't have kids in a couple of weeks. But I know we'll be ready to go when it when we are because the school's almost as spotless as it's ever been. And I really appreciate the hard work that everybody's put into it, and it's it's been really good. You know, I told my wife Monday morning, it's the first time since March I actually had to have a shower and be somewhere by eight AM in the morning. So that was kind of, it was actually fun, and it was great working with my team in the So uh, that was kind of, it was actually fun and it was great, uh, working with my team in the office with Tina and Catherine. Uh, they're great and I'm, I'm really, really looking forward uh, to this year and, and getting, hopefully, fingers crossed. Uh, getting some kids back in the building because it's, it's, it's really not a school without kids in the building. So um, hopefully we can move forward in that and the, the numbers will stay low enough. But uh, that's um, all I have unless anybody has any questions.
I, I am good to go on that, thank you, Mr. Danning for uh, for participating on, on the road, we appreciate it.
Okay, thanks and I'll uh, I'll keep my phone available if I'm in cell service and if you guys need me for anything, just call and I'll pull over where I've got service and I can log in again.
Okay.
All right, thanks, guys.
Thanks, Tom. All right, uh, six point three superintendent report, Mr. Wilson.
All right, uh, thank you very much and uh, I will be to the point as well. Um. I did want to mention uh, that we have our professional development program is, is just a couple of weeks away. We'll be starting that uh, traditional week before school begins, usually is the time when our. Teaching staff returns and gets their classrooms ready and lessons prepared and so on. But as we know, things will be a little different this year, so that first week of the thirty-first through September third will be. Uh, full day trainings in office three sixty-five and then our learning platforms. And uh, um, and that's going to be pretty significant uh, in the event that we, with the idea that we're starting in distance learning. Uh, and to have that skill set down and being feel, feeling somewhat comfortable in the platforms. Um. Will certainly be a benefit uh, throughout the year. Uh, the second week on September eighth through the eleventh, with that idea that we needed that extra week for. Technology training, that will be the time that uh, licensed staff um, does their lesson planning. They contact fam, the families and they finalize their, their schedules, working with uh, the principals. Uh, our classified staff will also uh, be returning on September the eighth, uh, in place of the traditional welcome back breakfast. Uh, we'll have a Zoom uh, fake snack um, to bring everybody back to start the school year. Um, a couple of budget related items I, I wanted to mention. Um. Uh, Josh talked about a couple of the items here at the high school, but on the, kind of on the positive side. Um. We received um, uh, the government's, the governor's emergency education relief. Uh, fund that was specific for comprehensive distance learning in the amount of eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred and sixty-two dollars. And so will be, that'll be an action item a little bit later uh, to appropriate that unexpected grant. In addition, uh, Mr. Metzger mentioned earlier that um, the purchase of additional equipment, uh, Gear Up. Uh, had some, as an organization, had additional COVID related support. And so existing schools got an additional fifty thousand dollar grant. And so we are using that to purchase uh, thirty-six more uh, Surface Go uh, devices, some hotspots. And uh, professional development for our staff. Uh, we've also received a couple of significant donations in the last month. Um, from Curry Community Health, we received uh, ten Dell uh, laptops that we'll be using for student use in distance learning. And Curry Transit District uh, has donated to the district a twenty-twelve uh, fourteen passenger. Um. Bus, you'll, it's essentially the ones you see going up and down the highway. Um, they have the wheelchair lift um, included in that, uh, will primarily be using that uh, for activities. Uh, so a bus driver, um, because of the size and so on of the vehicle. Um, uh, a certif, excuse me, a certified teacher or coach uh, could also be a driver. Uh, gives a little more flexibility of having a smaller vehicle uh, for some of the smaller teams and such. So we wanted to recognize that. And in case Mr. Ditting hasn't heard or all of you haven't heard, a recent conversation with um, the city. Um, with Mr. New Doll is that the city of Golden Beach has received a, a grant uh, to install sidewalks. Uh, on Sixth Street, um, essentially from the power station, this would be on the um, south side of the street. From the power station to uh, to the school. Um, not sure exactly when that's going to happen, but uh, one of the good things maybe out of having school not start immediately. Is that construction will happen this fall and hopefully when kids return, they'll have new uh, sidewalks uh, for safety and staying out of the mud there along Sixth Street. Um, that's the conclusion of my report unless you have any questions, you'll hear from me a little bit later on some other topics. You probably saw I half my head, there we go.
Uh, yeah, no, I'm, I'm good and anybody, anything for Mr. Wilson at this point? All right, we'll move to old business, right back to Mr. Wilson. Uh, seven point one uh, presentation of the operational blueprint and opening of school.
So I, I sent all of you a lot of information around uh, the beginnings of the, kind of the culmination of our summer. Uh, activities of planning for the new school year. Um, all of the documents that I shared with you have also been shared already with uh, our, all of our employees. As well as all of our parents, um, all the information I'm sharing tonight is currently available on the district website. Uh, but specifically by our requirement from ODE. Um, we need to have on file and have board uh, recognition of that. Um, and that is what's called the operational blueprint. Uh, we've had three versions of that plan during the summer. Uh, the first one was everyone coming back to school. The second one was a hybrid and then the third one with, of which we have submitted uh, last week. Um, is starting uh, our school year in comprehensive distance learning. So um, essentially that format uh, of that blueprint. Um, is the notification to the state and to the public that we have uh, done our research and have um, involved the community. We had three community forums, we had two parent surveys and with that came up with our, our recommendations to start. And so if we are to change our uh, operations, we would submit to ODE a revised blueprint. And so again, those are already in draft form, uh, so in the event that we do return back to school on campus in some form, uh, we'll be prepared for that. Um, one item I wanted to uh, share with you, um, well, it, first of all, are there any questions? Because in your packet, I gave you a copy of the three-page um, comprehensive distance learning template. And then there's the twenty-page uh, hybrid version. Uh, I didn't think there was a need to go through that until we have to uh, enact it. But worth, so any questions on, on the uh, comprehensive. Distance learning blueprint?
So go ahead, Scott.
Uh, I did not, Tim, I was just curious, um, were there mentions about the guidance provided on August eleventh? Did they, did they shift the guidance again that I've been trying to track it, but it's.
Sure.
Know it's a moving target.
Yeah, let me, let me speak to that, that most recent guidance. So you might recall that last Wednesday night, August the twelfth, was the day that I had set to announce to the public the announcement of how school was going to begin. Um, less than twenty-four hours before that announcement came some new guidance from ODE uh, that we're still considering. But it was too much information and too much planning. It was, it was an unanticipated change in the guidance. And so we're taking that under advisement and continuing to make and refine our plans. But essentially that, the biggest change in that guidance um, was an exception to the metrics. Um, rules and that is if you have a school. Um, with two hundred and fifty students or less and you can keep a cohort of kids, of fifty kids or less. Then you can open your schools. And so the high school with approximately a hundred and forty students, um, meet that qualification. If you take away the number of online students, Riley Creek uh, fits that definition. And so uh, the principals are currently working on specific plans on how those cohorts of fifty uh, would work. Um, the, the most logical plan is the going with the hybrid. And so essentially it cuts each school in half again and so we would have, excuse me. About a hundred to a hundred and twenty kids on camp, campus at Riley Creek and under a hundred at the high school. And so as we, the other exception that we knew about a little bit earlier than that, the week before. Was the opportunity for kindergarten through third grade to return. And so again, that's another option, uh, we're looking at all, all of those. Um. A lot of that depends on the matrix as well and if you saw our matrix yesterday, the one that was just announced. Um. Curry County had four cases um, last week, which on the per capita of a hundred thousand or more, that put us at seventeen. That's higher than the ten and so we have to start that three consecutive week uh, metric over again. So to me, that's again, a kind of a sign that our uh, public health, even though we thankful our numbers are much lower than most of the state, they're, they're still in flux. And so I'm, I'm more affirmed as much as I want to have kids return to school as soon as possible. I, I, I want, I would rather be on the cautious side and make sure that we're fully prepared for any opportunities. Um, as far as bringing staff and kids back to school. And so. Long-winded answer to your question is um, the guidance is going to help, uh, the new, the newest guidance is going to give us help to maybe open up. K twelve quicker than a lot of our, our neighboring schools.
All right, any other questions on that portion?
I, I did, if, if I may, I want to, as soon as I find my share of screen here, there we go. Um. Each day we have an update as far as where our families are as uh, in their uh, commitment to returning to school on a regular basis. Or to take the online option. Um, generally speaking, over the last three weeks, that percentage has been about twenty percent. Twenty to twenty-three percent of our families have selected going onsite, or excuse me, online to start the school year. And to remain in the online program for the entire year, even though we have some designated uh, breaks. In the event that the online version doesn't work out for them and they want to return, uh, we would do that. Uh, at the November time uh, of the first quarter and the end of the second quarter in, in January. But in the last week or so, as people are, are returning our phone calls and answering our survey, that number is actually almost to one-third. Um, of our families are choosing the on uh, line option. And I want to see if I can. Find that document real quick, excuse my. See if I can get this right. Hmm. Can we see that, the table on the screen, okay? Is there a table? Okay.
Yep.
Yes. So this is as of yesterday and I'll make this a little bigger, here we go. So if you look at the, the two right-hand columns. Those are students who have left the district um, this year. Since uh, since school ended, we have fifteen students that have enrolled in virtual charter schools. And we've had eighteen students uh, choose to have, uh, to go through the homeschool route. Uh, and then they register through the ESD, they provide their own uh, instructional materials and so on. So if you now look to the uh, to the left-hand side of the table. Um, well, actually, if you go to the total in the middle, that's how many we have per grade level. And then if you move towards the left, you'll see the numbers um, as of yesterday of people who have. Said they're going to be onsite or at school as we call it. Then the second column of those who are choosing our district online program. And then the third column are the people we still haven't heard from. So if you, if you look to the. Totals. We have a um, four hundred and thirty-six students um, currently uh, enrolled. If you add the fifteen plus the eighteen, which are people who have left the district. Um, that would bring us up to about four hundred and, let's see, that's thirty-five, about four hundred and seventy. And then we've had fifteen people so far let us know that they've left the community. So that's, and we left the, we finished the school year with four eighty-five. So that's the quick math that we've lost for this year, the thirty-three students in the two right columns. Of the four hundred and thirty-six that are left, you can see that right now, two hundred and thirty plan to come to school. Um, starting the year in distance learning, but when school uh, opens on November second, as our plan is. That two hundred and thirty will be onsite and a hundred and fifty-four would be involved in the online option. With those extra fifty-two, uh, we're still trying to figure out. Um, if you look at it again, uh, as far as some, where we go next. Um. Some of the plans that we've, principals will be finally, finalizing on Friday. Uh, again, this isn't written in stone, but um, you see as an example, um. There are twenty-four first graders and so those are the ones who would be coming to school. And then there's seventeen that uh, are choosing the online option, which will have limited teacher interaction. Cause that's essentially an independent study uh, program. Um, and so we have some, uh, our numbers in that sense are, you know, quite low. Um, but we also need to keep in mind that there's the potential that the people in that online district option. Might say, um, this isn't quite what we thought it was going to be and I'm noticing that everyone else is going back to school. And maybe the safety concerns or the health concerns they've had that um, it, that made them decide right now that they didn't want to return. To regular school, uh, they may have changed their minds. So we, I'm keeping staffing where it's at at this point, uh, with the hope, um, even though I'm, we're honoring those individual choices. But the possibility that many of those online options return to the onsite column. And so we'll be updating this, you know, between now and the beginning of school and then making those adjustments. Um. Uh, the kindergarten number looks low right now. Uh, I know Tina's uh, uh, in the meeting and uh, she has a good historical sense that she has shared with me. That it's not unusual to have five or six families show up on the very first day of school and enroll. So don't panic that our, our number in kindergarten is twenty-two right now. Uh, that very easily could be thirty-two or thirty-six when, when I report to you next on September sixteenth. So um, with that said, if you know any kindergartners out there that haven't registered, uh, they, the school's done a good job of, of advertising to make sure that they can uh, register now. Um, so. Are there any questions about the? Are there any questions about the the numbers you see?
Just looking for a little more clarification to Tim on the it talks about the fifty cohort size. How does that apply?
Sure. So essentially in defining a cohort. We're saying that that group of fifty students, up to fifty students. Are there it's kind of like their own. I guess what comes to my what come to mind unfortunately is like the the MBA bubble. They're in their own bubble. And so that group of fifty kids, if it can be consistent. Let me take it another way. Let's assume for this conversation that you see grades one, two, and three onsite right now. Is about seventy kids. That's two that's fifty is not appropriate. But if we were having. Half of them in a hybrid model, we would have half of them come to school two days a week. So now we have a group of thirty-five. And so that group of thirty-five. First, second, and third graders could have recess at the same time. They could have lunch at the same time. They could have electives at the same time. And that same model would would go throughout the the rest of the building. At the high school, you know, each. Grade level right now, you know, has between. Well, seventeen seventeen. And so if you look at that fifty cohort. One of the ideas Mr. Metzger is looking at is that the ninth and tenth graders as an example. Right now we have forty-two, so they fit within the rule of fifty. And so that group of ninth and tenth graders could come to school as one group. Be on a schedule for two days. And then on another two days, we would bring the juniors and seniors in. That cohort right now is around forty-one. So again, they're under the fifty. They would be at school at the same time.
I guess that's the question I'm looking for clarification. Can is it you can just have a cohort of fifty in the school at one time?
Sorry, you you sorry, thank you for the clarification. We would at Riley Creek as an example is we would have three cohorts of fifty. Going on at the same time potentially.
On one day, yeah.
Yeah, because they they would go to they all go to their set of bathrooms. That type of thing. So.
I was trying. That's what I guess that was my main question is you could as long as they're in a cohort below fifty, all staying together throughout the day. That right now that whole total of kids could be at the school at one time.
That is correct. Well, I don't do the quick math to say that. I know you see the hundred and forty-seven. It wouldn't. Work out specifically to fifty each. Well, let's see, I guess it might, huh? Well, no, because if you had first, second, and third grade, that's sixty-three kids. And so that maybe the cohort would be. K two would be a cohort and and which is actually what it should be. I should have used that as an example. K two right now, you know, physically in the building has. They're separated. So we could bring with these numbers, we could bring all of K two in at one time. We could bring. Where three, four might be three, four could be a cohort. And then we would. Well, that gets a little tricky there. Maybe five, five, six could be a cohort and seven, eight. Yeah, that's where it gets a little little dicey on trying to split up. Those numbers to have groups of fifty. So that's part of the challenge as well, and knowing that these numbers are in flux. All the way up into the first day of school. And so that was yet another reason why I wanted to push out. The final decision when to bring people back because we need to work through some of these logistics of that.
But just in theory, if a classroom was considered a cohort and they stayed in the same classroom all day long, that would be permissible?
Yes. But yes. And so again, we'll use that K two example. So part of the the work that Mr. Denning is doing is in trying to develop a schedule would say. And I say this obviously recognizing we've all had. Five, six, and seven year olds. You can't say you can only go to bathroom at nine thirty. Or at ten, they need to go all the time. And so but in this situation, if we were to say a a grade level was a cohort. Look, they might say, okay, your bathroom time is nine to nine fifteen. And then the custodians would go in, do a deep clean. And then from nine thirty to nine forty-five, the second graders could go in. So there would be some of those. Routines of around cleanliness that we would have to do in between that cohort.
Understand. I have a question about the. Cleaning in between groups.
Sure.
How is the school? Number one, is the school staffed in a way that this is feasible? And number two. Are the extra cleaning supplies coming out of the money from the state? Or how is that? How do you see that working?
You bet. So one of our plans I've already shared with the principals is that are until we have night activities. Our nighttime custodians will actually work during the day. So we'll have two custodians onsite while kids are on campus. And so that will help with the the routine and as far as doing different types of different. Excuse me. Different sections of the campus on a it'll be a pretty regulated schedule. Excuse me. As far as the cleaning supplies, we made orders the third week of May on some of the COVID related extra strength. You know, the hand sanitizer stations and all that. And we're actually still on back order, which is another reason why. We couldn't I would not open the schools because we don't have all of the extra equipment. That we've want to have in place for each classroom. So part of those protocols that we're doing. Are address that as far as the funding for it, we did get. We did get some additional state funding related to COVID related CARES Act. Expenses specific for the equipment, the new equipment we're purchasing as well as the extra cleaners. We have purchased a lot of the face masks. Already and received those. And in the last week FEMA gave. Oregon Department of Education. I think they've said it, there were eight semi truck trailers full of. Of. Of masks. And so those trickle down to the E S D. So in my office right now, I have about four thousand more masks and shields. And then I've recently and again, this was all before the governor's directive that the K. Students down to kindergarten need to wear masks. And so those are now on order as well for the for the littles.
Tim, I'm wondering if you'll speak to the online district option. How that will affect the district or if.
Sure, be happy to. So. In giving the option for people to work online. In an online environment, it was important for us to find a good quality program as an alternative. And my energies went to two specific. Vendors and. The final decision was that we're going with a company called Edgenuity. Edgenuity is a program or a. Platform we've used at the high school the past four years, primarily in credit recovery and in enrichment electives. And there became an opportunity with Brookings that Brookings Harbor School District. Received a special deal on the licenses required to do that. And so they invited us to coat tail on that. Contract. And so took advantage of that. And then at the same time, decided that we would also offer that at the high school. So all of our teachers K twelve will have access to the Edgenuity platform. And those who are in the online chose the online option. And I apologize ahead of time of some of the. The vocabulary gets a little bit mixed up between online versus distance because everyone's going to be online at the beginning of the year. But so I'll try to keep those terms. Separate. So specifically for the online. Students will get. Their sign-ins and they essentially it is a is a self-directed. Program where there'll be daily lessons in each of the regular topics and subjects. And then we will assign a staff member from each school who will be kind of the monitor to help with questions, but that that teacher. Won't necessarily be doing the day to day lessons. They're more of a resource and the teacher of record. Those who are starting the year in. Distance learning. All of our teachers will have the option of using Edgenuity as that same platform. That platform also allows teachers to add. Their own materials. To the lessons. A teacher may choose not to use Edgenuity at all. We know in some of our advanced courses honors English and some of the advanced math, potentially chemistry. Those those lessons may not be at the caliber or the standard that we need for advanced studies. But for a lot of the teachers, they we've encouraged them to review. Edgenuity's resources and their lessons as appropriate lessons, but also encouraging them to enrich those lessons. With their own materials. Did I answer? Okay, with that, Kayla, did you have?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. And as far as. I think the. Okay, I think I'll stop there for now. I I'm sorry, I'm babbling a little bit. I will. I will say this. That I know that both of our school office staffs are are getting a lot of questions. And I think. Part of the challenge in being a parent and working with your child in this. Specific situation. Is is the challenge of kind of a norm that grew out of last spring's distance learning for all. Where, as you all know, and this is no apologies, I'm not making any apologies for this, but. The quality of our instruction, things were, you know, came together very quickly with little little. There were expectations for to provide lessons and to provide make contacts with families and so on. But for many families, it was it became optional, especially for a lot of families who. For whatever reason chose not to access the lessons online. So they chose the packets. And so what has resulted in this is I think some people think. And this might be kid driven. I'm not I'm going to make that assumption that kids got kind of used to. Oh, this is easy way to do it. I can do it whenever I want. I can sleep until. Two in the afternoon and then work for a little bit and then go play and. And so if that's what they're expecting in this new online version, they're going to be sadly mistaken as well as. As the instruction that our teachers will be doing, you know, they're by the new standards that are required to do between two and a half and three hours of. Of synchronous essentially live instruction every day. And and so and it's on a schedule, so it's not as free flowing. As it was maybe in the spring. I'm hoping that as soon as. Again, honoring people's choices, but I'm thinking people are going to realize that perhaps the online. Environment may not be what they want. Then again, if it's working for people, we 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 want to, we had to honor that. I I think because if we didn't. Then I'll take a one minute sidebar if I will, just to update you around the virtual charter schools. So. The other option, people who if we did not offer an online option within the district. Then people would have the option to homeschool on their own or to enroll in a virtual charter school. Each one of those students who leaves the district, I hate to put in this sense, but right now to give you. An example is about eight thousand dollars in state school fund support. So right now our current numbers say we have fifteen kids that this year, this summer enrolled. In in a charter school. So that's hundred and twenty thousand dollars that won't be with us next year. So imagine the impact. Right now we have over a hundred people. If we had a hundred people say, I want to go to an online virtual school. We've now lost. Eight thousand. That's eight hundred grand. I mean, that's that's that would be brutal. So. We had to come up with a an option. An option, excuse me. And the option we chose is very similar to other schools in our area have done. Port Orford is a part of this Edgenuity package as well. A school like Kokil, they already had their established Winter Lakes Academy. And so that was an option we also looked at. But for financial reasons, it was a better choice for us to go with Edgenuity. The last part about the charter school is there is a law that actually helps protect school districts. That. No more than three percent of your attendance area. Can be approved to. I can stop approving people's requests once we've reached the three percent cap. However, and unbeknownst to me, we have had families in our district who have been longtime virtual charter school people. And we were actually over the three percent before this summer even started. But my only way to. My only way to address. My only sorry, my only way to keep people from going is if the district offered two online options. Well, until the summer, we didn't have any options. So I legally could not stop them from going. And so. By establishing our our distance learning program. And our online with Edgenuity, we now have two online options that people can select from. And so however, those people I committed to early in the summer are. Are moving forward with their virtual charter schools. But anyone who's applying now, I won't be approving those because we have two options here locally.
Okay.
Just one one quick thing, Andy, if you don't mind.
No, go ahead.
Timmy mentioned is some of my questions I had where charter schools, when they withdraw their students, the funding formula is affected. Is that not the case with homeschool students with the other eighteen homeschool students?
We will also, yes, unless they re-enroll with us, we will lose those eighteen as well.
Yeah. That was to me, that was the elephant in the room because it at thirty-three students, I mean, we're closer to like. Two hundred and seventy thousand. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a hard hit to a small district.
It absolutely is. And if you look at it. Yeah, probably the easiest way to look at it if you think of a licensed person being around a hundred thousand dollars. That's two two staff members. That's what the equivalent is. And so, yeah, that's so we hope to recoup, obviously. If if I I believe that there will be. Many people who once the health crisis has some resolution, whether that's vaccine or whichever that we will recoup. Some of that thirty-three, but it'll take a while to catch catch up with that.
Percentage wise, is this a pattern that's being seen at the other schools in the region?
I haven't. I don't know, Jeremy. I, I haven't, I, I don't know, Jeremy. I, I, no.
Tim, do we have data on what other districts in the region are, are starting the year with? That I hear correctly, Port Orford is going to be online only.
Actually, yeah, so, actually, Port Orford is going to be starting in, in our county, Port Orford and Brookings are both starting their kindergarten through third on campus. And the last I recall for Brookings is theirs, they were going to do it in a hybrid model, so half of their students, at one point, they were looking at AM, PM schedule. I'm not sure if that's still accurate or not. Port Orford's numbers are small enough that they could bring all of their K3 back, and they're actually, in their plan that I saw announced last week, are starting with K3 in the building on September 14th, and then three weeks later, they'll, they'll bring back their fourth, fifth, and sixth graders, and then the next three weeks later, they'll bring back their seven, eight, nine, and then, or seven, eight, and then their high school students will return about the first of December.
Okay.
So are, there are, there are some districts that are moving forward with their K3, and that's something, again, we've, we've considered. We just want to make sure it's a safe place for kids and, and staff, and I'm not, I guess it's not as confident in, in the metrics as the, the other districts neighboring us.
Well, that was my, my question, or my point, you know, my point is that, I mean, if we get another week of, you know, whatever it is per, on that per capita number countywide, that would knock us back out of the running for that theoretically, right?
Yeah, the, the caveat to that is there is a separate metric for specifically for K3, and that's if that number of 10, that per capita of 10 is 30 or less. Then a K3 can open. So we're, we're, even, even with the 17 that we had this past week, we could still open K3 if we felt that was appropriate.
Okay. All right.
If I may, real quick.
So I'm sorry, is that, is that you, Jeremy?
Yeah, just real quick, I, I'm not sure if you've seen the press release, but we did have another positive case today. That trend continues.
Okay. Yep. Yeah, okay. Tim, did you have anything else you want to add on?
Nothing with, no, nothing with that.
Okay.
Yeah. And I guess, I guess I would go into the next topic as a, another requirement of the operational blueprint. The district had to have a communicable disease management plan. And again, I won't go over that in detail tonight, but that was included in your packet. And I'll be putting it on the website, but essentially it's a, a series of diseases from the common cold and flu to head lice, to infant tygo, to tuberculosis, and it gives us guidance on do we exclude kids from school and what it takes for them to come back, and any prevention and postvention we would do with any type of those communicable diseases. So that's been completed.
Okay. Very good. Any, any questions on that? All right. We'll move on to new business here then. 8.1, second reading of proposed policies. Does anybody have any questions or comment about that?
I think they all look fine. I don't see much change to anything significant.
Yeah, the highlighted areas in yellow would be those changes that are, are new on the revisions. If it's a new policy, then there should be no yellow on them.
Okay.
And I'm assuming, since this is my first time, but I'm assuming these are, these are, the language revisions are recommended by
OSBA.
OSBA, okay.
You bet.
Need a motion on that, Andy?
I believe we do, yes.
I move to approve the second reading of proposed policies as presented.
I'll second.
Nancy second. Call the roll here. Kaylee Clarno.
Hi.
Scott McNair.
Aye.
Nancy Sorenson.
Aye.
Jeremy Skinner.
Aye.
Andy Wright is an aye. Oh, proposed policies approved as presented. Okay. Moving on to 8.2, school calendar change for the start of the school year. We'll, we'll be moving it to September 14th. Anybody have any, oh, go ahead, Tim.
I would say, I just wanted to, to clarify that by moving the date, we're still okay as far as instructional hours. The State Board of Education has approved account, giving us each district additional time for that extra week of professional development for our teachers, and for also extra time to have parent-teacher communication throughout the year. So even though we're delaying the start of school by four days, we don't have to worry about making up any time. So the, the, the last day of school is still being June 6th, June 5th, June 16th, and graduation, June 11th are not impacted.
Okay. Very good.
Move to approve the calendar change as presented.
All seconds. All those in favor, Kaylee Clarno.
Aye.
Scott McNair.
Aye.
Nancy Sorenson.
Aye.
Jeremy Skinner.
I muted, aye.
And Andy Wright is an a. 8.3, approve the proclamation declaring September as suicide prevention, awareness, and action month. We, we have attached data here, and I will turn over the floor to Gordon Clay if he's still on, on the call with us.
I'm still on.
Okay.
Very interesting meeting. For the record, my name is Gordon Clay from Brookings, Oregon. August is overdose awareness month. According to the New York England's, England, New York, New England Journal of Medicine, accidental drug overdoses, deaths, and suicides have increased at an extreme rate during the early days of this pandemic. Suspect, suspected overdoses nationally jumped 18% in March of this year, 29% in April, and 42% in May, data from ambulance teams, hospitals, and police. And I understood that earlier this year, within this month, I think we had six overdoses in five days in Curry County. And that might have been in Brookings. Statistics show that the, the profile of Americans envisioned when concurring, conjuring up images of a typical overdose victim is far from accurate. These deaths are not limited to back alleys and core neighborhoods. According to the 2014 study, drug users most at risk for overdose are white, middle-aged suburban men. The highest overdose death rate in 2015 represented people between the ages of 45 to 54. The good news is overdoses are 100% preventable. They get, get help if you need it, and don't let yourself or someone you love become an overdose or suicide victim. A sidebar, I encourage all AA meetings to open as soon as possible. In the meantime, I venture that more people will die from drug overdose while the meetings are closed than die of COVID-19. September is suicide awareness and prevention plus action month. Suicide is at an all-time high. In 2017, analysis by the CDZ broke down categories such as cancer into separate cancers, and then listed the 50 leading causes of death. In Oregon, suicide was a leading cause of death in four of seven age groups covering 15 to 40-year-olds. We also know that suicide in rural Oregon is much higher, and in Curry County leads 36 counties in per capita suicides. In the 2019 Healthy Teen Survey, 26% of Curry 11th graders self-reported that they had seriously considered attempting suicide, and 9% actually did attempt suicide last year. 90% of the people who die by suicide have demonstrated warning signs, but their friends never picked up on them. Especially during this pandemic, don't be one of those friends. Learn the risk factors and warning signs and what to do, so that when you're around a neighbor, friend, colleague, or family member who is showing those signs, you can ask with confidence, are you okay? And let them know it's okay to say you're not okay. That conversation could change the life, and it, it might change yours too. Together, we can change the conversation by countering myths and fear with information and action steps everyone can take. We all have a role to play in suicide prevention, not only during the months of August and September, but all year long, so join me in this effort, won't you? And I want to applaud the Board of Education for finally requiring school districts through Addie's Act SB 52 of requiring the development of a suicide prevention, awareness, and postvention program. And I would be happy to review that for you. I did that with the Brookings School District. And I think I helped them quite a bit. So let's really, just a sidebar, New York State, instead of saying suicide, mental health is another added thing to the teacher's plate. In New York State, su- suicide prevention and mental health is the plate. Education goes on top of that plate, but without mental health, those kids are not going to learn. So let's really pay attention to our kids and our family members, because a pandemic, I believe, is only going to get worse because the government's going to back out of helping people. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clay. We will, yeah, we, we will revisit that in the very near future, for sure. All right.
Andy, I do have a copy of the proclamation, if you'd like me to read it or not, it's up to you.
Um, I, if, I've got it here too, if you'd like to read it.
No, you go ahead, if you'd like.
Whereas suicidal thoughts can affect anyone regardless of age, gender, race, orientation, income level, religion, or background. And suicide is a major public health issue that requires vigilant attention and preventative action, especially during times of a pandemic. And whereas, according to the CDC in 2017, suicide was the leading cause of death for 15 to 54-year-old Oregonians, and Curry County led the state in per capita suicides. And whereas 20% of Curry County 11th graders reported seriously considering attempting suicide, and 9% actually attempted suicide last year. Whereas, and whereas each death by suicide directly impacts numerous family members, friends, loved ones, and by extension, the entire rural community. And whereas every member of our community should understand that throughout life struggles, we all need the occasional reminder that we are all silently fighting our own battles. And whereas reducing the stigma by discussing suicide and warning signs, promoting safe and responsible care of lethal means, and increasing public awareness of the resources available for at-risk individuals, encourages help-seeking behaviors, and helps attempt survivors and survivors of suicide loss in their personal healing. And whereas asking for help is a sign of real strength and the first step towards achieving mental wellness, particularly during the extended period of the COVID-19 pandemic. And now therefore, the Central Curry School District Number One hereby proclaims September 2020 as suicide awareness and prevention and action month. Be it further resolved that the district encourages all citizens to learn the warning signs, trust their gut, and use that information to ask a troubled friend, colleague, or family member, are you okay? And with that, I move to approve the proclamation declaring September as suicide prevention, awareness, and action month. Yeah, action month.
I second the motion.
All those in favor, Kaylee Clarno.
Aye.
Scott McNair.
Aye.
Nancy Sorenson.
Aye.
Jeremy Skinner.
Aye.
Andy Wright is an a. Okay, thank you, Gordon. We're going to move on to 8.4, approved resolution 01-2021 to appropriate the ODE grant for comprehensive distance learning. Tim, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, ab- absolutely. I just, so this is a reminder that this grant of nearly $89,000 was not anticipated when we went through the budget process last spring, and so therefore we would be adding this to the special revenue fund. That $89,000 would bring us up to a total appropriation of $1,564,570. And this funding is as set aside for comprehensive distance learning.
Okay.
So as a point of, well, I'll, I'll comment after, it's the, the board action.
Okay, I'll read the resolution here. Be resolved that the Board of Directors of Central Pre-School District One hereby increases the appropriation of expenditures in the special revenue fund for 2020, 21 by the amount of $89,000 for a total appropriation of $1,564,570. This increase is due to receiving a comprehensive distance learning grant from the Oregon Department of Education. And that will go to the 200 Special Revenue Fund subheading 1,000 Instructional Services. And with that, I move to approve the proclamation, no, no, I move to approve resolution 01-2021 as presented.
I'll second it.
All those in favor, Kaylee Clarno.
Aye.
Scott McNair.
Aye.
Nancy Sorenson.
Aye.
Jeremy Skinner.
Aye.
And Andy Wright is an a.
Thank you.
Okay. 8.5, discussion regarding consolidation of Curry County school districts.
So, yeah, I, I put this on here, and you may not want to even discuss it at all, but as most of you are aware, at the County Board of Commissioners meeting two weeks ago, there was an action item to place several advisory votes on the November ballot. One of them included special districts for libraries, and Mr. Skinner eloquently spoke against that. One of the other advisory votes that was suggested was that there be a consolidation of the three school districts in Curry County to be one. During that meeting, county council advised that this was not a time to consider that for a few different reasons that. So with that said, I was advised by Commissioner Gold that at some point our board might want to have a discussion about this, and, and then prepares essentially a statement of before, against, since that time, I, I've spoken to people who've been in this community for many years, and this is not a new idea. But I didn't, I, I, so I put it on the agenda tonight for your consideration to either have a discussion now or postpone it or not at all. So that's, that's my introduction.
Yeah, I mean, well, I mean, I, I think. Well, I mean, I, I think, I know Scott and I have taken part in this discussion in the past and in board workshop meetings. And, you know, just, just in district planning. And I mean, it, it, it's been, you're right, it's been passed around multiple times and I, in my view. You know, I, well, I, yeah, I, I, I don't see it as a benefit to any of the school districts or, or, or even really a savings. To any of the districts that could then be, you know, funneled elsewhere theoretically. I, you know, I mean, our current administrative setup has Mr. Wilson has a point eight and that's probably. You know, the, the actual workload that, that comes along with the job is. Probably far expands the point eight. I'm, I'm quite positive it has the last four or five months. So I don't, you know, the idea of being able to cut here and save there by consolidating school districts. It, it's not something that I see as a, as a real feasible idea and, you know, probably not worth really. Exploring, spending a lot of time on, in my view, so that's just my two cents on the subject.
Go ahead, Jeremy.
Yeah, um, I think that from, from my perspective, there's, there's two things and, and one of them doesn't really have anything to do with. The districts themselves. One of them is just a legal point, which is that. I felt like for special district libraries, we were being drug into a discussion which. By which the county had no legal authority to lead or. Engages at that level. And so. My stance wasn't about the sentiment behind it. It was about the legality of it. And so, um, I think that. You know, as school districts, I would just, if the school districts ever decide that they want to have a conversation, that's one thing that might. Be good or it might be bad, but. The legality of engaging with the county government leadership over that, that's something that I have concerns about. Um, that's my main comment. And then I guess my second comment is regardless of. Whether district consolidation is good or bad, I certainly believe, as I said in my statement. About why, what I think about. Education, I think anything that the Central Curry School District can do to collaborate with other districts like Mr. Wilson mentioned. With edgenuity, I think that's a great thing. And I think that actually speaks somewhat to the sentiment behind. What some of the ideas are behind consolidation. So that's, that's all I have to say about that.
Thank you, Jeremy. Scott, did you have some thoughts?
I think I was kind of along the same lines of Jeremy. If there was. Cost savings related to consolidating different areas. I think that would be fantastic, but not in the sense to put it back into county government. I would put it back into the schools to create more opportunity. So I mean, it wouldn't, it wouldn't accomplish their point. I mean, I would love to do cost-saving measures, but at the benefit of the school.
Exactly. Kaylee or Nancy thoughts, comments?
I agree with Scott and Jeremy.
I agree with everything that you guys have said. I don't think that it's worth our. Time to come up with a statement for something that is probably not going to come to fruition.
Yeah, yeah, I, I say we just let it lay until unless the, the discussion becomes more, you know, serious and real, but I, I, yeah. I don't, I don't see much benefit in spending more time on it at this particular moment. So with that, we'll just move on. No, uh, no citizen input requested on nine, so we will move to individual board member comments. Kaylee, you can start as the.
I don't have anything to add at this point.
Okay. Mr. McNair.
Um, I would just like to say to Tim, you know, I, I commend and respect. The work that you and the district advisory committee have done to date. I know that. It's a daunting task and I appreciate that dedication on your side and also bringing in the community and teacher leaders and. Making it a collaborative effort in that sense. I still stand firmly by my belief. It has been, has been, remains, I'm, I'm committed to getting, uh, our students back into our schools. Uh, of course, with the appropriate, uh, prevention measures and, uh, you know, to me, I believe that the reward of that. Outweighs the risk even at this point. And, uh, you know, I believe in, coupled with that, if the state's saying you can do this at different levels like K three. For instance, or K two, whatever it is, um, you know, I think. We have an obligation to, to do that. Whatever gives it, wherever we're granted the opportunity, we need, I believe we need to do that. It just kind of plays in to being on the board for the last seven years. There's always been an emphasis on K two, so much of your foundation for education and with the presentations I've been a part of. You have to be at third grade level by third grade. I mean, that, that idea right there's been. Repeated and repeated at every board meeting, every time we do a budget meeting. So. To not carry that through even during something like this, I feel like is a contradiction to what. That, that point in general. That's, I think that's where I'm at. I, I know, I think it's going to be a really difficult fall. Uh, starting up for families. I mean, just speaking as a parent for myself, uh, I have one student that's going to be comprehensive learning from. Eight to eleven in the morning and another student that's, that's set for, um. Uh, around twelve o'clock to three o'clock. As a parent, that's a, that's a seven-hour window. And, uh, you know, I, I don't think I'm alone in that and, and, and that's, that's a difficult. Predicament to be in for parents across the whole state. So my commitment remains to getting kids back in school.
Alright, thank you, Scott. Uh, Nancy, thoughts?
Um, just want to thank the two candidates, Jerry, Jerry, Jeremy Dumire and Jeremy Skinner. Thank you, Jeremy, for taking on this position and thank you for Jerry, Jeremy Dumire for being present and participating. And that's it.
Alright, thank you, Nancy. Uh, Jeremy Skinner, thoughts? Anything you want to add?
Not really, but, um, I, I chose to do this because I really do appreciate all the work that this board has done over the years. Some of you have been with it longer than others, but, uh. I, I feel comfortable, um, and, and happy that I can contribute with this group. So thank you.
Thank you for being here. I don't have much. I just wanted to say thank you to. Uh, all, everybody in the administration and, and, and everybody that's been working over the course of the summer trying to figure out what. What the heck the plan's going to be and all of the committees and meetings and. Moving goalposts, I, you know, the last six months has taken a toll on everybody's mental health and, you know, your jobs have been. Getting more, you know, more and more piled on top of them every day and changed and I, anyway, I just appreciate all, all the work. Everybody's been doing i- in that regard. It, it hasn't been easy and it probably. Will not continue to be easy for the foreseeable future, but we'll get through it. And I do, I, I agree with Scott. I, I, my goal is really to have the kids in the building and it, and it. You know, I, I, I've said it all along. I, I, I am hopeful that if we can get into October with. You know, minimal cases, minimal to no cases in, in Gold Beach and the greater Gold Beach area. Uh, you know, I am fully in favor of getting the kids back in the building as soon as possible, so. Um, that's all I have for tonight. Uh, upcoming dates, the first day of school will be Monday, September fourteenth. And the regular board meeting will occur September sixteenth at six P M. Uh, and, and Tim, were, did you say when I talked to you the other day, we, we're, we're still required to do Zoom meetings, is that correct?
Yeah, I, my, my recollection is that the. Uh, executive or by executive order from the governor. Uh, goes through, I think at least the end of August or the first week of September. Um, so there is the potential that we'd be able to meet live unless that executive order is extended. So as good as I know, I'll let everybody know.
Let's plan on Zoom probably unless we hear otherwise, but yeah, we'll, we'll forge ahead. Alright, thank you, everybody. This meeting is adjourned at eight oh four P M. Have a good night.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you. Bye-bye.